Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 23, 2011 Board of Education meeting. We have an executive session. First item is called at order. I see Mr. Lou's here, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Dr. Title, John Matola's here, Mrs. Iacono. I expect Mrs. Albin will not be here. Mrs. Zahn had a family emergency. She won't be here tonight. Mr. Carey's here and Mr. Fattabean. And item two, executive session. Going to item three, recommended motion that the Board of Education go into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with the Fairfield Education Association, FEA, and the Fairfield School Administrators Association, FSAA. Mr. Carey seconded by someone. Mrs. Dow on favor. Okay, we're in executive session. I have to throw you out if you're... All right, we're going to convene to the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Called at order, we have Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Dr. Title. I'm John Matola, I'm here. Mrs. Iacono. We have Mr. Carey and Mr. Fattabean. Mrs. Zahn has a family emergency tonight. Unfortunately, she won't be here. Mrs. Albin's taken her son back to college. So, we're all here. Let's rise for the Pledge of the Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are on item number seven, approval of minutes. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 28, 2011. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Brand seconded by Mr. Carey. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Ananamous. Next matter is item eight, committee liaison reports. Mrs. Albin's not here. Mrs. Brand, do you have any reports tonight?
Actually, the Board of Health was canceled. The next Sess meeting is in September. And that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Dow, anything?
Mine's quick, too. No report on Finance Subcommittee or SEPTA. We'll be meeting in September for those. Only thing to mention under CAPE is congratulations to Ludlow's group, Close Harmony, as they've been chosen to perform at the CAPE convention in November.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean, anything?
Yeah, we had several transportation issues arise. Transportation Safety Advisory Committee met. And I don't know the actual results yet, but I sent my information in and my vote or decision. And the ultimate decision, I am not certain what it is.
Thank you. Mrs. Iacono, anything?
Oh, yes. I hope everyone's been having a fantastic vacation because the Special Project Standing Building Committee has been meeting regularly, nonstop. And I sent everyone a brief on where we stand. I hope you all had a chance to read it because if you're not in agreement with it, I really need to hear from all of you at the table tonight. In summary, all the bids came back for Sherman School over the amount that was allocated through our bond resolution. So, we are short money on the project. We cannot move forward at this particular time unless the town bodies rewrite the bond resolution to do a lesser project or to increase the funds so that we can complete the project with the administrative wing, with the appropriate teaching space and security issues addressed, the second serving line in the cafeteria, and the new ventilation in the building. Since I sent you that brief, we have now gotten further clarification and a second ruling from the Building Department on the FEMA regulations. And it looks as though the classroom ventilation is indeed still a code violation and is not subject to the FEMA cap. However, because there is already a ventilation system in the APR and the gymnasium, albeit a poor ventilation system, it looks like that that is simply a maintenance issue that at this particular moment in time, and when I tell you that things change daily, I'm not exaggerating or kidding, it looks like in order to improve the ventilation system in the APR and the gymnasium, that would count against FEMA. And therefore, we would go over our 50% allocation on FEMA for Sherman School. So, at this time, 8:10 on August 23, we would not be able to improve the ventilation system in the gymnasium and the APR. So, we have been working as Building Committee very closely with the Board of Selectmen. They've been extremely helpful, the three members of the committee coming to almost all of the meeting, our building meetings, helping us with the process, helping us to figure out how to handle this. And we are in the process of getting further clarification on those two pieces. Where it stands right now, we went before the Board of Finance to give them an update on where we were and where we thought we would be heading. At the last Building Committee meeting, we thought we were moving forward with asking for an additional $1.2 million to complete the project. But that number was based on ventilation in the gymnasium and the APR. Now, with the fact that it looks like that will hit the FEMA number, I don't know that we will be asking for that piece of the project until we get some further clarification on it. And if that's the case, then I think we're down to around an additional funding request of around $800,000, give or take. So, this has been a very long drawn-out process. Obviously, shovel in the ground did not happen August 1. It's been delayed. We are cautiously optimistic that we can get through the town bodies and get something done with the shovel in the ground for November 1, which would then mean that we could at least have the second serving line, optimistically, done for the start of the second half of the school year, and would still be working on the administrative wing into the new year. And then, we would be doing the ventilation system next summer because that obviously can't be done when the students are in school. So, that is a brief update. I am hoping that we, as a board, you know, can, I can just get a sense of the body that you're in agreement with where we're going because I know some of the members of the other town bodies were a little concerned about that. But nothing in terms of the scope of the project has changed. It's still, you know, the administrative improvements to safety, the increases in classroom space for special education and the second serving line. And then, it's really come down to this ventilation and trying to do what we can with the money that we have and the restriction of the FEMA number.
Through the chair, Mrs. Iacono, do, had they separated the pieces out that are code work and that are safety issues on the site that need to be done as opposed to things that actually come under FEMA? Because I thought FEMA was when you started to go above and beyond and expand, like the parking lot, or you add to the building, whereas the code work, as way I understood it, did not come under FEMA because FEMA was saying, hey, you gotta keep it safe.
Right. If you remember correctly, we eliminated long ago all the site work, parking lot, all that stuff's gone. We are down to bare minimum basics.
But if you're talking about, that's again where I'm going. If we're talking about the administrative part, does that come under code? Or does it come under?
That's all new construction, so that whole entire wing hits FEMA.
It hits FEMA, right. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it has been separated to see if we could...
We have separated everything out. And that's long been part of the problem is we've separated things. We've gotten rulings. We've got new rulings. We've had things re-looked at. We've reworked things. And that's why I didn't say it in jest. Seriously, at eight, whatever time on the 23rd, this is where we are with the ruling. And, you know, as we dig deeper and move more things around, you know, we've been able to make it work. Whether or not we'll be able to make it work this time, I don't know.
I guess what I'm asking, for instance, a cafeteria line.
Yes.
Is that considered, because to me, it affects children directly, a safety, a code issue? Or is that just an extra?
No, that's an upgrade to the building. So, it's...
Okay, well, that, okay. Because I guess what I want to see is if it's possible, whatever we can do that is most, the things that directly impact the students, I'd like to see us. And I'm sure you're already, they're already doing this, put it, but you're asking, you know, board members where they're going. One, what we can get paid for, what funds we have, what would fit in that that would have the greatest impact on the students in terms of priorities, those would be mine. What we can put off, because it comes under FEMA, we may be able to phase that in over time because I know we are allowed to do that. And maybe that would be the approach.
Yep. Now, that's exactly what's in the summary I sent you. So, you haven't said anything different or contrary to what I sent in the reports. So, and that's...
I don't know, has it been ironed out what will be paid for and what won't be in terms of what does meet code and that that doesn't come under?
As I just stated in my five-minute dissertation of what happened at the Building Committee, yes, except for the fact that we're waiting for the ruling on...
From the state, you mean?
No. This is done on a local level, and it's done by the local Building Department. So, we are waiting to speak with the Board of Selectmen. And specifically, Jim went to iron out the APR and the gymnasium issue.
For the FEMA?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
I know this has been discussed in this project before. I don't know if there's been an official, so actually, to the chair, Mrs. Iacono. Do we know definitively how often FEMA resets on that building? Is it annually?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yes.
So...
It's one year from the CO.
And if I understand you correctly, you're looking just for a sense of the body that the Board supports asking for the funding to complete the project?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I would most definitely support that since we've already stripped this project down to much less than we originally asking for. The other thing that I'd want to keep in the back of the other town bodies' heads is that if we're not able to complete the ventilation in HVAC, which is important, as I stood in that gymnasium in May, that might be something we want to come back to them for another year and down the road when FEMA resets for maybe a short-term bond, or maybe that ends up in our maintenance. I don't know. But I don't want the APR and the gymnasium ventilation to go away. There's going to be a necessary update. If we can't do it in this bond, I don't know how much it'll cost to do those two spaces. I suspect it'll be enough that it would be bondable, though. So, the only, I'd say most definitely, yes, I support this and the request. But I would also want to make clear that because these things are now coming off, that they will see them again. And it's not the last they'll see of Sherman. These two pieces of ventilation are going to be important to health and safety of our students in that building. We're going to have to address them, you know, maybe 12 or 18 months from now as opposed to right now.
Yes. And you raise a good point. And we need, that's also something that we need to figure out at the building level. But knowing that from the Board that this is a priority, that they would want to move that forward, I, you know, I need to hear that from you guys so that I can communicate that effectively.
Yes, I think you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. The RTM really hasn't been meeting, and they've only been holding special meetings for stuff on the Metro Center, nothing related to the schools. And I've been attending the Board of Finance meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, anything?
No reports.
Mr. Lou.
Thank you. On the Fairfield Woods Building Project, I had gotten a report from Bill Supone, who is the Chair of the Fairfield Woods Building Project. As anyone has driven by there, it looks like ants all over the place. I mean, these guys are working very, very hard to get this done, even though it might look like it's not going to be ready. They are telling me that it's going to be ready for the opening of school. They are going for their inspections tomorrow to secure the temporary certificate of occupancy. They can't say for certain whether they're going to get it, but they're optimistic. There are no issues that they are, they're thinking that are outstanding. An air conditioning unit arrived from Canada on time, so the cafeteria should be ready for school opening. Parking areas are being finished up as general cleanup is underway. Yes, there is going to be a list of things that will need attention after the school opening. So, we will be ready for students and teachers, but we will not be finished with the entire construction. And I think some of that we already knew. But they expect that the cafeteria will be operational on opening day. And this is all, again, knocking on wood. And the only thing that I think that they said that there's been a mix-up on is the smart boards, which now seems to be back in order again. And they will be maybe behind a couple of weeks. So, that's it for now. Unless, Mr. Cullen, Mr. Superintendent Title, have you had...
I believe the next meeting is actually at the school, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, the next meeting is at the school. And I think we're going to do a walk-through.
Thursday night.
Thursday night. Yeah. Thank you.
Good. Sounds good.
I'm next. No reports. Mrs. Zahn's not here. So, that leads us to item nine, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Title.
All right. Well, board members took two of my items, so that's good. That will make me slightly briefer. First, I would like to introduce to the board and the public two new key members of the Central Office Leadership Team who are present this evening. You may not have met them. So, first Karen Parks is the new Deputy Superintendent, replacing Jack Boyle. Karen, I think we sent out Karen's background to you, but just the short version is that Karen was a high school science teacher, a Science Department Chair, a science instructional coach, which is like a curriculum leader, Director of Secondary Education, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Assistant Superintendent. And she's now with us. So, Karen, this is the board. Welcome. And Doreen Muncell, who's seated next to Karen, is the new Bonnie, Director of Business and Finance. And Doreen has been Business Manager in Public School Systems in Connecticut for, I'll just say, over 20 years, so we don't give away her age, right? She's very experienced, has been in a number of school districts, knows the ins and outs of school finance, and has been getting up to speed. And both, we've really been fortunate in sort of having almost like a month of transition between the incumbents and the new folks. So, had a nice opportunity for Bonnie to transition with Doreen and for Jack to transition with Karen so that they're ready, ready to go. So, Doreen Muncell in the front is the Business Manager. Welcome to the team. And I'll say, you know, a huge amount of knowledge and years walked out the door when Bonnie and Jack left. But they have made it clear to us that they're available on a moment's notice to lend their historical knowledge and wisdom to us. So, if we need anything from them, they are only a phone call or an email away. So, very, very difficult to watch that amount of institutional knowledge go away. But I'm really confident we've got some top-notch people to take their place. So, Bev needs to know, or I need to know if you're coming to convocation on Monday. So, if you haven't told us that, because I like to introduce board members if you're there and it's very crowded. And I'd hate to miss you and not introduce you because that would be like really bad. So, just let Bev know if you're going to convocation. It's Monday at Ward. The Coffee Ann starts at 7:30, and then the event starts at 8:30. And I promise she'll be out by 9:15. We're very brief. I already gave Mike Tetro the "you have one minute" speech. All right. I do want to bring you up to speed on a few little projects, maintenance, stuff we've basically gotten done over the summer, above and beyond, what you've already heard. First of all, Stratfield is in really good shape. Obviously, Woods is going to be great, but Stratfield, the Library Media Center phase is completed, the gymnasium works is completed, the exterior canopy and site work is completed, the facade work's completed, the new field is completed. We expect a full CO this week on Stratfield. So, I think that's going to be a thing of beauty. So, Mr. Lou did a marvelous job on the Woods project. You know, some of these things, you know, as I'm reading them, I'm thinking to the battles we had over them. So, it's good to report. Jennings bathrooms, remember that? We didn't get, if you recall, we did not get the full amount to fund, so we couldn't do all the Jennings bathrooms. But we were able to get and stretch the money to get about 60% of the bathrooms completed at Jennings, two full gang bathrooms and two small bathrooms. And they are marvelous. And so, perhaps if we do another walkthrough over there and people see the difference between the new ones and the old ones, people will say, aha, now I know what you're talking about. So, we did get that project done. The early childhood center playground and resurfacing, that's been a little behind schedule. We've had some issues with the contractor on that. So, that is, been designed, it's been bid, we have a contractor, they've started work. But it's obviously not going to be ready for the start of the school year, but it will happen. It's in the works. Roger Ludlow Middle School Roof Repairs, those are in progress. That was the one where we put some money up, but the contractor put up like four times the money to do the roof repairs. That was approved by the RTM. That's in progress. So, that's going well. The McKinley, where McKinley was left was the RTM approved money to do an investigation by a consultant. Remember, they appropriated like $30,000. They didn't give us the money. We wanted to actually do it. So, nothing has happened to stop it from leaking. So, we are doing a patch on it. I told Mr. Cullen, we just, we can't just let the thing keep leaking. What ideas does our roofing person have that we can pay for out of our own budget just because we can't, at this point, because it went to TFC and it's been sort of lounging, nothing's going to happen with McKinley roof till next summer. So, we are putting a patch on it, a membrane. We're going to wrap the copings in a membrane to stop the infiltration of water. It's just a temporary solution for the year to keep it safe. But long run, there is a, the roof investigation by Hoffman Architects has been completed, right, Tom? And they basically confirmed what our TACTA said was the problem. So, after six months of studying this thing, we're back to what our roof consultant said was right. So, now we're going to have to go back in for the permanent fix on McKinley. But we are putting in place a temporary patch to keep the really bad situation we had last year from recurring. I mean, it's not ideal, but we are, we had to do something. Couldn't wait another year and just put buckets in the halls again.
If we hadn't have had to wait, would we have been moving forward and not have this extra expense?
Correct.
I think that is worth mentioning.
Yes. This came forward as a proposal back in our regular cycle. The point of the regular cycle was to get this work done in the summer. It was diverted off for further investigation. And so, there's been further investigation. And...
At a cost of $30,000, right?
Well, that was the allocated amount. I don't know if that's exactly what the contractor bid. But...
To confirm what we already...
To confirm what, right. So, anyway, that's just, that's where we are on that. Did you want to jump in on that, Tim? Yeah.
To the Chair, to Dr. Title or your team. So, TFC had Hoffman come in to look at this.
Right.
I said it, two of those meetings, May, June. Hoffman determined it would be $100,000, like our team did, through TACTA?
I don't know if they've costed it out yet. They, that, right. Right.
Is the project going to be able to completed within the $30,000 or is that allocated?
No, that was really just for the consultant work. Right. Right. So, as I was saying, we're looking at a permanent fix if all the town bodies approve, that we'll go and, we would do next summer.
And just, you know, a comment to my fellow board members, I asked Mr. Cullen, and he did kindly, send me pictures of the buckets that were collecting water in that brand-new $24 million building that we had to replace another building with that was leaking. And because of the bureaucratic delays that we're in, building projects and construction and maintenance in this town, we're making this extra expenditure. So, this is, again, a plea by myself to my fellow board members. We have to go to these other town bodies and come up with a mechanism by which we bring projects before them so it doesn't change every time. The goal line changes every time. Let's just get to the bottom line here. We have different things we have to bring to the Board of Finance. Then we have to get the TFC involved. Then the TFC gets involved, and we change what we're doing. And then, by the time we get to the RTM, there's a whole different set of questions. And the problem becomes that this becomes such a protracted process that we're damaging buildings that have a breach in them. And we're caught in this bureaucracy. So, we need to find a way, maybe working with our new first selectman, to streamline this process, understand what the requests are going to be in advance, maybe working backwards from the RTM would be my suggestion. Say, what are the 50 things that we need to answer? So, when we walk up, if Mr. Cullen's list only has 48 on him, it shouldn't leave this body. When it has 50, then we pass it through, but it should go through in less than two years. And that's been an ongoing frustration that's been building over the last 24 to 48 months. And it's got to stop because we're doing damage to the insides of these buildings now, and it's not acceptable.
Actually, I agree with Mr. Carey here. What has happened over time, it used to be we had a process in place, went to the Board of Selectmen, and went to the Board of Finance, went to the RTM. There's now a new step. And the step has been to a very, a bunch of volunteers who are great. The problem is they're not elected bodies. They don't meet on a regular basis. And it has caused delays. And in this instance, unfortunately, it's actually cost us money as well, not to say that it hasn't elsewhere. If we want to have any of those folks involved, rather than, I'm, we're second guessing every single decision that has been made by people that we hire here. If someone wants to sit and go through with it with us, and then we invite someone in, I'm open to us looking into that. I just, I'm very uncomfortable with what we've, by default, created a delay with a great bunch of people, but they just can't meet regularly enough. And it poses a real issue for us and our operations. And I just don't think this formula is working. And clearly, it's not working.
Actually, this was supposed to be my good news report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But to address that issue, there is a capital planning summit again. Remember? And I met with the first selectman yesterday about a bunch of issues. And that's on September 20. And I said, and my number one concern, aside from obviously the total dollars the Board will get allocated, is coming up with the process. So, I think at that summit, you know, we can certainly raise the issue of, it's one thing to say you have an allocation of $2 million, or your allocation is this. But the second part that's equally important is, what's the process we're all going to agree to? And actually, he told me he had a presentation format with 24 questions on it. I said, well, send that to me, and we'll make sure that we get the 24. I don't know that there's one with 50. But he has 24, and someone else has the 14 points like World War I from the TFC. So, I think that's an excellent step. We'll just get exactly what the criteria are. But that, we can bring this up at the summit. Now, I will give you, see, this was supposed to be the upbeat beginning of year report. At the next meeting, I have a chart of the projects that are stuck in the water and where they are. These are ones we're actually making progress on. Okay? So, let me tell you some other good news. I guess the McKinley wasn't great news, but...
Kind of medium news.
Medium. That was a mixed blessing. Okay. Try to keep our sense of humor. Holland Hill Oil Tank, the oil tank is being removed.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. All right. Those of you that were following, this happened before I started, the Tomlinson stair tread issue. Anybody remember that?
Big one.
It's done. Congratulations. We have new stair treads at Tomlinson. And according to Mr. Cullen, they're works of art, to the extent that a stair tread can be a work of art.
They're safe.
They're safe, exactly. So, I just, I wanted to point some of those things out. The Tom's crew has done a terrific job again, of course, doing the regular work. We did do some restriping in the parking lots at the high school in preparation for the new parking rules that are going to go into effect for the high school. So, we did some restriping to designate the student parking from the staff parking. And we're still sorting out the logistics and how we're going to collect and enforce the parking changes there. There have been changes in the state law with respect to bullying, a significant change to the state law. We will have a proposed policy for the Policy Committee at the September meeting, which is the 7th, right? So, that, and that will come to the Board for first reading at the September 13 meeting. So, those of you who've been wondering or seeing things about big change in bullying, I mean, it just happened. And we just got CAPE's recommended policy. So, we're working it through, and we'll have that for you. Now, this is going to seem like a little thing, and I'm going to stop. But we have finally changed the email extension.
We saw that.
All right. The most unwieldy... The most unwieldy, if you've ever tried to explain to people what your email address is here, and had to say, is it Fairfield.CT.K-12 dot whatever U.S., finally, it's your first initial, your last name, at FairfieldSchools.org.
Nice.
That's a big breakthrough. I mean, we did change, if you remember, we changed the domain name last year to FairfieldSchools.org, but now we got people's, now, the old email address will still work for a while, we're not going to turn that off, but I can't tell you about a time I've heard people on the phone trying to explain the email extension, and now you can just say it's FairfieldSchools.org.
The board members' ones?
Everybody's.
You can use the old ones still.
The old one will still work.
We had our first name and our last name. We were different from you guys.
Whatever you had as the, your first, your first name, that hasn't changed, but the, it's just the extension, the, after the at sign.
Okay.
All right, this is in terms of public communication. These are the small victories that we we celebrate in this business periodically. So the email address has changed. That's actually more complicated than it sounds, I'm making light of it, so, all right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Although I think I'm next.
You are next. The next item is discussion of, new business, I'm sorry, 10A, discussion of understandings on health insurance.
All right, I have at your table a draft understandings, and we've got them in the back for the audience who really want to dig into this. So brief background, for those of you who might try to put this out of your mind last year in the budget process. We had a lot of perhaps misunderstandings about how people thought the health insurance medical retention fund should work, how we would budget it, what the board couldn't, couldn't do, what the reserve levels needed to be, whether we could reduce our contributions if we were overfunding it, et cetera. And remember, it was memorialized to some extent in an agreement that had been signed by the previous superintendent and the previous first selectman. And one of the things I said as we went through this is that I would take on trying to hammer out essentially a new deal that would respect everybody's rights and responsibilities, and also respect the fact that we're part of the town, and that we might need to keep more in there than than, say, the consultants would recommend because of the town's financial situation, AAA rating and so forth. So I had several meetings with the staff, Paul Hiller, with Aon, with Tom Flynn, and then most recently with Mike Tetra, to try to hammer this out. I just want to walk through the sort of the main points and get some feedback on this. If this is a direction we want to go in, ultimately, I would like the board to vote on this. One of the things that we heard last time was, this was sort of negotiated on the side, the board never approved it. Where'd this come from? Now, whether the first selectman wants to bring it to the selectmen or just sign it himself is not my thing, but my goal is to get feedback from you. If we need to have legal counsel look at it or draft it in a different format, that's fine. But this is the, so here's the basic idea of this. One is, this is, obviously would replace the memorandum, the previous memorandum. Remember, the previous memorandum had something in there such as, whenever the first selectman felt like it, he could take money out of our account and put it in the town's account? It didn't quite say it that way, but that was the effect of it. All right, so you could see the second bullet point there says, funds in the board's account will stay in the board's account. Okay. Now, we went through, how were we going to determine our budget number for the 12, 13 year and beyond? In the prior agreement, basically, you know, Aon would give us a projection, and then we would budget based off that. You know, we would subtract our employee contributions off that. This stipulates that the board will budget so that we will maintain a fund balance at the end of the year at twice the IBNR. Remember, the IBNR is the amount that you need for runout. These are claims that have been incurred but not paid out. That's a number calculated by Aon for us. It's not a number the board has any control over. In the last meeting with Aon, they told us, look, prudent practice is, you only need to keep 125% of that number in there, all right? But this is where we said, look, in the, in this interim period, we'll agree to keep two times in because the town is trying to catch up to us. And their concern is if we take it down to 125% or 100%, they haven't a chance to build theirs back up. So this, you know, over the years, this number may come down. Right now, based on where we are, and we had a terrific year with health insurance, I don't think this will be a problem for us, okay? This is not going to negatively impact us. But that was sort of, you know, what's the, because that was the big question we kept asking is, what's the balance we need to keep? Will somebody tell us what the number is so we can say we're following guidelines? So this is what we came up with, twice the IBNR. It's about $3.6 million, round numbers. All right, so that's the big thing. In other words, we're going to get a projection as of November 30th from Aon, and then based on that projection, we will budget that way. The next point deals with, can the board, if there's a budget cut, and you've had favorable experience, can the board reduce its contribution as part of a budget cut? Remember, that was a separate issue in June of 2010, where the board's budget was cut by $3 million, and then the contribution was reduced, and it was a problem. Famous, that's the simple way to say it, was a problem, right? It's like on the Lincoln Memorial, and then the war came, all right? So, and then the war came. So this basically says that we would only reduce our contribution to the succeeding year's budget after we review it with the Board of Finance, and we're going to maintain twice the IBNR. So the board would not do this unilaterally, as sort of a compromise. But it doesn't say we can't do it, it's just, you know, we need to be transparent about it. We'd continue to separately rate the groups, that was important to us because our employees generally have a better experience rating than town employees, and so we didn't want to be lumped into one big group, right? Let's see. The other, the next one just explains how we do it. Oh, and this is another one. One of the reasons that Aon and others think that we are often kind of overfunding this is that we have traditionally budgeted new employees almost at the family coverage rate, but in fact, many of our new employees aren't utilizing at that rate. And that's something that I guess is, you know, precedes me and others, and there's a history to that, and they wanted to know how we did it. In fact, in my previous job, I would say, we used to budget nothing for new employees because we thought the turnover would take care of it. So this is sort of a compromise, that if we, if we have new employees to budget for, that's an if, that we would budget at the single coverage rate. So that's a difference of maybe eight grand per employee.
Yeah, how much?
Round numbers, you know, in round numbers, we'd been budgeting, say, $15,000 for new employees. For every new employee, we added about $15,000 for the health insurance. This would be about $8,000 for a new employee.
I was actually thinking, new employees, how much money does that mean in a budget year that we're not having to put in anymore?
Well, it depends how many we budget for. It's in the wage and benefit reserve, so until we know how many new employees we might seek, we can't calculate that. But I don't know what we're going to be requesting. If, we may be requesting no new employees next year, in which case, this is a moot point. I don't want to signal that for some reason I have in my back pocket a whole slew of new employees I'm going to propose. But enrollment is still growing, just a hint. And just, this is something, the last point was simply that, if for whatever reason the board wanted to make additional contributions, we could. And that's it. So thoughts, reactions?
Mr. Fattaby and then Mr. Carey.
The second bullet point there.
Mm-hmm.
Is, it says, funds currently in the Board of Education Health Insurance account will remain in the account. What about funds that are added to the account subsequent to this proposed agreement? Was your intent would be also to maintain those funds?
Yes.
In the account? So it's not just current funds, it's all funds?
Correct, correct, all funds.
All right.
So we maybe could reword that a bit.
That might be nice.
Yep.
And I guess I have a couple, two factual questions.
Sure.
I don't recollect, but perhaps you do, what the last fiscal year's IBNR account was.
The IBNR last time around was about 1.9 million?
1.9?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the fund balance at that time?
At what point?
At the time that they, in other words, was our fund balance at that time twice the INBR?
It was just about twice the IBNR.
So the anticipation is we don't have any catch-up to do.
Correct.
To meet this requirement of a two, of twice the.
No, I would estimate right now that in fact, we are over twice the IBNR.
Okay.
I'm about a month, again, we won't know this for sure until we finish the claims, I think they go through October 31st, and then they'll tell us. But right now, if we had to create a budget based on where we stand with respect to the IBNR, we would not be making any catch-up contributions to reach this figure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
First of all, thank you, Dr. Title. I think this is excellent. This is definitely moving us where we want to go with this agreement, especially since I think the last agreement started to create behavior that was part of the problem. In terms of the IBNR piece, I, it's pretty clear what we're being asked to do. We are part of an ecosystem of the town. I understand the town is behind, but what requirements are we going to have from the town's side to meet IBNR, and will they be required to meet our level over a certain period of time? In other words, our problem in the past has been that the town is consistently underfunded, and therefore, they've looked to us to backstop them. And since we have employees that contribute to this fund, I understand the majority is taxpayer money, but that becomes a sensitive issue.
Right.
So is there any plan to have a request requirement or have this be mutual in terms of funding IBNR, with the advanced understanding that the town's not going to be at 2X the first year?
Right. They're trying to get to 1X.
Right.
Right? I mean, I think the overall picture here would be that can we get both sides to like 100%? You know, can, once they get to 100 or 125%, then I think we can revisit whether we really need to keep two times in there. So it's really a transitional move. So they pledged to us, and they've actually taken action towards this, you know, in the last couple of budgets, to really try to beef up their contributions. So I think they really have backed up their desire to beef up their side. I think that their issue is that they just can't go there all at once.
But with all due respect, that the the Board of Finance has met that commitment, as is currently construed, the town leadership previously has not. So my concern is if this board is going to commit two times IBNR.
Right.
Of our budget to medical benefit retention fund, is it reasonable for us to request that the town maintain some certain level, at least where they're at right now?
Mm-hmm.
And then achieve 100% of IBNR within, you know, a certain year period? And I wouldn't know, begin to know what is realistic there. I would lean on Mr. Tetra and Mr. Flynn for.
Right.
But is that something that we could add into the equation? Because I think that if we're going to have an agreement where we have requirements, it should be mutual.
I'll research it.
The other question I had along these lines is, there was a separation, a mutual separation clause in the former MOU that basically stated that either party could leave a disagreement with certain given amount of notice by the end of the fiscal year, however, the town would take all the funds.
Right, that's right.
Is that still going to be in this agreement? Is there going to be some type of separation agreement? I mean, obviously, we're part of an ecosystem.
Right.
We want to work with the town. If this makes sense for the town and the board, we'll continue to do it. If it makes sense to go to private insurance at some point, we'll, you know, work with our bargaining units to determine if that is something we can do.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Carey. I think there has to be language in the the agreement that allows both parties to exit, but obviously, without that, if we exit, the town takes all the money.
Or whatever, whatever makes sense.
Right, now, that, of course, anything written, that goes away because this completely replaces it. But what I would do is, I'll, I'll have our, you know, the attorney review this, look at the agreement, look at this, and he may want to have this in a whole different way. I'm not sure that, you know, we want the agreement written with bullet points, but this was the concept, and then I can ask him to look at that issue, and whether or not, I can actually look at both issues.
Right.
Right? But to pay attention to the separation clause, is there a way to word that so that, you know, either party can leave the agreement, and, but the funds remain with that party or something along those lines?
And I think in terms of business goals for this agreement, I think these are great, and the only points that I would.
I would say the town's been very agreeable on this. I mean, everybody really just wants to straighten it out so that when I bring the budget forward next year, and you see the number for health insurance, I can say to you, this meets the guidelines of the new agreement, and here's how we got there. And we, we can debate other things. All right.
Thank you.
You have anything, Mrs. Iakono?
No, thank you for the work on this.
Yes, Mrs. Sue Dow.
No questions, but I think it looks good, so thank you.
Mrs. Brand, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Couple of things. Are we going to put a time limit on this so that we're reviewing this annually, given that we don't know what the town's financial circumstances are going to be? That might be part of the exit strategy. Yes. I actually agree with Mr. Carey entirely. This isn't really in an agreement, in my personal opinion. If we don't see any contribution from the town's side, we're agreeing to something, but we're not sure they are. For instance, if we decide that we don't have to put some money in, that's quote, "found money." I wouldn't want, after we go into the town bodies the subsequent year, saying, well, you found money, you're now going to be deducted that amount. So I think some language has to be in there. The other thing is, I would like to think that the board would want to define clearly what those funds would be used for, and when we would be doing it. And the last thought I had, and I mentioned this to Dr. Title earlier, was, I don't know, the statutes say that boards can't have any kind of reserve accounts, we can't have any carryovers. So I just want to be sure as we're moving forward, that if we're going to be able to have this, I know the town did this, but I want to be sure that we are also protected moving forward, that we're not going to run into someone saying, sorry, that's, that's not money you're not, you're not allowed to use. In terms of budgeting, will we budget for the higher number in maintaining it? So we're, we're going to be moving forward, doing it two times?
That's right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I would say, I will check on the carryover and legality piece with the lawyer when I check on the agreement. I'll also say that to some extent, this is a good faith thing on both sides, because really, the town can't dictate a line item amount to the board, right? This is really, you know, any more than we can dictate to them, that they can, that they have to contribute a certain amount to their health insurance account. So to some extent, this is a sort of a good faith gesture on our, on our part, saying that this is what we're going to try to do, just as if they put something in here about, you know, the town will maintain a certain amount in there, that we have no mechanism to hold it to it, anywhere than they have a mechanism to hold us to it. So really, I think this is, we're trying to enter into this as sort of a good faith, meaning the goals of both parties, but really, still, the board is not, I want to make sure the board is not giving up its right to its line item independence as part of this. Sorry, Perry, did you have anything?
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Fattaby.
Based on some of the things I've heard, I would recommend then, that in the agreement, that the twice the IBNR requirement would phase out if the expectation is the town is going to increase their funding reserve, and at some point, get to a level that is both presumably, whether it's 150% or 125%. But to have it, because it seems like me, the understanding is that we won't need twice as much at some point in time, so you'd want to have it, the parties at the time have some understanding as to what direction we're going, and probably now is the time that they're be optimistic as to what they can achieve.
Right.
And therefore, have it phase out in that period of time.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's why reviewing this and deciding whether you want to, both parties want to renew it each year would be valuable because of the circumstances change it would allow for that.
Right. Yeah, we, we tried to work on, I mean, this, this took a while, this just shows up in a few bullet points, but we tried to work on, you know, if the town gets to this level, then we can get down to this level, and then, you know, it's such, very hard to see it play out. We certainly could put in as a, as a goal or a target, that by, maybe by a certain, by the 14, 15 budget, the Board of Ed would be at 125, 125% as recommended by the consultant, and the town would be 125%. But, you know, one really bad experience year on the town's side might throw that off, But, you know, one really bad experience year on the town's side might throw that off, you know, off kilter. So I think this is really, both sides are going to be a good faith effort here. And what this means is, though, if our estimates, the practical side of this, and the reason I spend so much time on this is, you know, more money we have to put into health insurance that we don't necessarily need to have in there is less money that can go to other things. So that's the goal. But at the same time, I don't want to jeopardize the town's fiscal situation, obviously. So if the numbers work out, for example, this means that if we're at 3 times the IBNR when the numbers come out, we actually can show a reduction down to the 2 times level as part of our budget process, and everybody's okay about that. Right? We won't be accused of raiding the fund and so forth. Okay? So that is, keeps the fund from building up endlessly, that it sort of caps it. And so this may, you know, this may work out well. What I'm hoping is, with any agreement, it works out well for both sides, but that's the idea.
And Mr. Lou and then Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent point about how much money we have in there in the mutual helping of each other
Right.
for this fund. I mean, I don't want to rub the town's nose in it because I think we're all trying to be working together as one town. But when we are sometimes criticized for our budgets, it's important to note how we are also helping the town
Right.
with this.
Right.
Yes, Mrs. Brand.
Is the IBNR also going to be adjusted for the change in stop-loss?
Yes, the IBNR will be adjusted based on experience and the stop-loss. And that's all done by the consultant, so we have no, you know, input into that. IBNRs can go up and down. They don't always just keep going up because if you have a really good year, obviously, you don't have as many claims left. That can work in your, you know, in your favors as well. So again, we're sort of three months away from knowing what the final numbers are. But I will tell you, based on the 12-month rolling history, we had a really good year in the health insurance fund. So let's keep our fingers crossed for the next three months. And that will have a, you know, I think it's got the potential to help us in terms of not only helping the town, but keeping our budget at a reasonable number going forward. That's sort of the... And protecting our dollars, which we're subject to being taken. All right. Thank you for the feedback on that. Hoping to have something more definitive as an item that could be potentially voted on at the next meeting. Obviously, you don't have to vote on it at the next meeting, but we need to nail this down. We talked to the first electman about it. You know, they'd like to at least discuss it at their level, maybe in their October meetings. So we kind of know the gist of this, so see if we can wrap this up at the next meeting, if that works for people.
All right. Item B, discussion of purchasing guidelines.
All right. I don't have a document on this because this is the town. Some people might have seen this in the summer. The Board of Finance is reviewing its purchasing guidelines. It's on the agenda for September 6th, Board of Finance meeting. I would say I'll be there, and any of you are welcome to this stimulating conversation. The short version of this is, the Board of Finance has had purchasing guidelines in place since 1998, and they have not been revised. So we have had an opportunity to put our two cents into how those should be revised. Under the charter, all the purchasing is done through the town. All right? Whether that's in conflict with state law is another issue. But for the time being, we're working with them, working with Ms. Holland, working with the other people, to Paul Hiller, to see if we can't get these purchasing guidelines to be revised to reflect changes in the world since 1998 and the board's needs in terms of purchasing. Because some of the purchasing guidelines end up where we have to spend more money for products than we should. And with our limited budget, I have a lot of incentive to try to maximize what we spend our money on. So just a couple, a quick thing. So these are the issues that are out there. There are no draft guidelines that are... This is constantly in motion. So I don't even know if the Board of Finance will adopt them on September 6th. That's just the next time this is coming up. One is the bid limit and the quote limit. Right now, the quote limit, anything over, any transaction over $1,000, we have to get 3 quotes for. And anything over $7,500 has to go out to bid. Those have not been adjusted in 13 years. So we're looking to see those go up, and I think the town's agreeable to that. So that's one issue. Second thing is, right now, the guidelines, the way they're written, we are not allowed to participate in cooperative, regional, or consortium purchases unless those folks have actually advertised in the newspaper in Fairfield, which means we can't participate. Which means that we cannot take advantage of a lot of cooperative buying arrangements that are out there in the state of Connecticut or beyond the state of Connecticut, which means we pay more for some products that could be bought through a consortium. So we're looking to get the ability to do that. And I think that, my understanding is, the Board of Finance and Ms. Holland are amenable to that arrangement. We have a... Well, we'll see. There's an issue we have about, a lot of work we have to do, particularly for purchasing things that are copyrighted and available directly from publishers, sole source materials, so textbooks. You know, we go to buy a textbook. Textbooks are bought directly from publishers. To go out to bid on that is enormously wasteful in terms of time. If for some reason the publisher doesn't bid or the bid's defective, we end up paying a third party to produce the textbook for us, it costs more money. So we're looking for exemptions to the bidding for items that are clearly sole source, that are copyrighted, that are available directly from publishers. So we're looking for some... It's a lot of work for purchasing. It's a lot of work for us, and it actually costs us money. And then I'm looking for some flexibility that in emergency, urgent circumstances, that I can actually be, grant an exemption on some of this purchasing. Right now, I don't have that. That all has to come from the purchasing department. And frankly, what constitutes an emergency on the education side, in my view, is something that I would like to have some flexibility on. I'm happy to report to anybody about when we've exercised that exemption for accountability's sake. But quite frankly, we know when there's urgency and when it would be incredibly difficult to follow the guidelines. And so we're sort of working out what kind of flexibility would the superintendent or staff have to make that happen. So those are sort of the big issues around it. And it's up for discussion. It's not something the board takes action on. It's not something... But it's out there. It's public. There's newspaper articles about it, and I just wanted to bring it to speed. Okay.
Let me just ask a question to get it going, and then if any board members have questions. I guess two questions. I'm thinking of this as an attorney. We are a separate legal entity under the law. We don't have to be beholden to, my understanding of the town's purchasing guidelines, if we choose not to be. And it sounds like that we're, as a town, we're spending more money by being beholden to those guidelines. So why is the town so hung up that they want the Board of Education part of the equation? By... Are we saving the town money by being part of the process in some way, if you know?
No, we're not saving the town money. There's a charter provision about this.
Yeah.
Okay? And the charter provision is pretty clear on its face that purchasing for the town and the Board of Education, were named in it, go through the purchasing authority, which is the purchasing agent and the first electman. If you handed that to a lawyer, they would say that conflicts with the state statute, which basically grants fiscal independence to boards, once a budget's adopted. Just like boards don't have line item veto on our budget. They just give you a bottom line, then we decide, or you decide where it goes. The same thing is pretty much true about expending the money and that the, you know, legal authority in the field who's written the book on it, Tom Mooney, has a chapter in his book, and it clearly says in there, purchasing guidelines and purchasing authorities from Boards of Finance or Board in towns are not enforceable. All right? But at this point, because I'm such a cooperative sword, rather than get into a legal fight on it, because we could get an attorney to say, this conflicts with state law. State law governs, therefore, you can have independence. They could probably get the town attorney to write an opinion that says, no, for some arcane reason, you're wrong about that. And we have dueling lawyers that's just... So...
Yeah, I hear you.
Rather than get into that, if we can make the guidelines work for us, at least as a first step, then down the road, if we think it's in everybody's interest to have the board do its own purchasing and so forth, and that could actually save the town and the board money, we can look at that in the future. So we entered into this in a discussion with the Board of Finance Chair, who sort of said, look, you know, let's see if we can meet your needs this way. And so that's what I entered into these discussions about. But ultimately, you know, if the board wishes to take a harder line on this and pursue a legal battle on it, that would be your, obviously, right to do it.
Yeah. I don't know if I want to go there yet.
But I agree.
You understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. In fact, I quoted the section of the statute and sent it over to them. So Paul would like to think...
Mr. Fattaby, go ahead.
And I am of the opinion that the town is doing what is legal. I think what the issue here is, is the town acts in a ministerial capacity of expending funds at the request of the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed has discretion to expend those funds, but they can only be spent by a town account because there is no other account, I think. All funds go through the town account, per se, or the town treasurer. So I think that the request has to be made to the town to spend. The part where they don't have discretion, that they have to spend the money at the request of the Board of Ed, that's the fiscal independence. But ministerially, by statute, it has to go through the town coffers, so to speak, or the town treasurer.
The practical effect is, though, they hold things up.
Well...
Okay?
That is...
Because they say they don't meet the guidelines, which means they're not really just a pass-through. They're actually acting in the capacity of making a judgment about whether we're expending them wisely or not.
Well, I don't think they can do that. I think they have to do it as a ministerial act at the request of the Board of Ed. But I don't think we have the statute of authority to actually be our own purchasing agents and spend money independently from the town. I don't think we can do that statutorily.
Anyway, I didn't pursue the legal aspect of it, so...
We can pressure them to expedite the purchases and say that they have an obligation to purchase at the request of the Board of Ed, and they have to expedite that. But their criteria only is ministerial. They have no subject matter criteria, so to speak.
Anybody else? And then Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, I think it helps if we know why the charter revision happened because sometimes something did happen that caused it to be changed. And I don't know whether, in fact, that did or not. That might help us.
I don't know if this is a change, by the way.
Yeah, forever.
I think it's just always been there. I think that some of the... And these purchasing guidelines, by the way, have been around for a long time. And it's only recently that they've been enforced. I mean, that's another thing. It hasn't been an issue. But, you know, I think this is one where, you know, I'd like to try to play ball on this and see how it plays out. And we do, by the way, I should just point out, we do cooperative purchasing with the town on a number of items. And there are places where it is very beneficial to us to have the town and the board together to bid and have the town conduct those bids, and we don't want to get rid of that. I mean, in other words, we collectively bid out electricity or natural gas or fuel oil. There's buying power, and that does benefit the town and the board. We're most of the consumption of all this stuff, so the town's benefiting from the board's aggregation of this. So when they go out to bid on electricity, you know, we use 80% of the electricity, you know, but they get the lower rate because they're in a purchasing with us. We're not going to get rid of that. We would never want to get rid of that. That benefits both sides. This is much smaller potatoes things that are very cumbersome. And when we want an exception to them, sometimes we get, but these guidelines don't let you have it. So they say, well, I can't revise the guidelines. Well, that's because they're the Board of Finance guidelines. Well, we can't ask the Board of Finance to revise them? Well, I guess we could. So that's been the...
Yeah.
It's been a year's worth of...
I agree that we don't want to do a tug-of-war. The only other thing that I think might be helpful in the interim, if we could start to, in the hope that maybe we would have a division, is to have some procedures and protocols that either mirrored what the town does and have them be transparent so that, you know, if we want to be able to be independent, then perhaps we would have to meet what their guidelines are in our own departments so that maybe we could move towards that. Because right now, I mean, you know, you don't want to waste a lot of time on it.
Well, a more common way this works is Boards of Education pass their own purchasing guidelines. And then it's my job, our job, to make sure that they're followed. So in other words, it wouldn't be... If we were independent, we couldn't just do that. I'd have to bring you a policy
Right.
about purchasing that you would approve. And then I would be responsible for enacting it. And the extent to which you wish to give flexibility would be in that policy. So we couldn't even take it over right now. We have no policy on it. We'd have to go to the policy on that one.
Mrs. Iaccone?
To that point, I agree that we should work in a cooperative effort with the town to try and resolve the issues that we have right now. But assuming that these things, changes are made, can we get some kind of status update, how they're running, and if we are indeed achieving the savings that we want to be achieving? And if not, then I think we need to reassess and work towards then maybe possibly putting in our own policy. Because the most disturbing aspect of discovering all this is the fact that this has actually cost taxpayers more money, the way this has been set up. And I know that was not the, that's not the goal of this.
Right. Well, costing, it doesn't really cost taxpayers any more money.
Well, it's costing us more money to buy things
Exactly.
which then it all rolls down the line.
Right. See, my point was, look, we have a tremendous incentive to maximize our purchasing power. If there's a chance to save money by bidding it, we of course want to bid it because that means, because we only have a certain allowance from, you know, a large allowance.
Sure.
Right? So we have tremendous incentives built into the structure. So it isn't like the board can go ask for more money from the taxpayers because of this. What it means is that it, it means there's less resources to go around with the allocation we do get from the town.
Sure. And if we can spend less on textbooks and we can spend less here and spend less there, then it helps.
If we can spend less on paper,
Right.
generic white reams of paper, then that means we have more money to spend on other things. That's really more what it is, as opposed to, it's not really costing the taxpayer more. We're going to get more bang for our buck. How's that, with the allocation we do have?
All right. Well, yeah. Well, then, that being said, if we could just revisit this and just to make sure that we are receiving the maximum amount for our dollar allocation, then that's a better way to say it.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? Okay, I'll say...
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that feedback. It's helpful. September 6th, if you really want to hear the blood and guts of it.
So we're on item number 11, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to 2 minutes, and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific board member. Decorum will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to item number 12, open board comment. Any open board comment from any board members? Yes, Mrs. Brand.
I know it's actually too soon to ask this of folks, but perhaps in our next meeting, if we can find out how with all the deductions, everything worked out and sort of get a recap of how it played out and if we still have any holes. Thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else?
The only thing I want to say is that Jack Boyle officially retired today?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Today was his last day in the office.
Last day. I just, on my behalf, I just want to thank him for his many years of service to the district. It was, you know, it was a pleasure working with them. And I wish him luck, and I'm sure all the board members wish him luck. Yes, Mrs. Iaccone?
I just wanted to echo that, and I know Mr. Boyle secretly snuck out of the building. So if you could pass along our gratitude for his service here, that would be appreciated.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the next item is item number 13, convening to executive session. Recommended motion that the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation. Mrs. Iaccone, seconded by Mrs. Dow, on favor? Okay. Thank you. You have to leave.
Force them out. I'm like, can I have like 2 minutes?
Yes.
We think it's 2-minute break.
Yeah, that would be great.